Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the June 6th, 2024 regular meeting of the Enlarge City School District of Middletown's Board of Education. Take the opportunity to call that meeting to order at this time. I'm going to ask you, well, I'm going to read this disclaimer first. This agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they were made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes which are available on the district's website. Mr. Estrada, could you please read that disclaimer in Spanish?
Sure. Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambio en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
Thank you, sir. So we called this meeting to order. I'm going to ask you if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Curtis Rhett. And after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could remain standing for just a few moments of silence, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Williams. The first moment of silence this evening is for Stella McLeod. Stella McLeod ran the Twin Towers Cafeteria for many years. She served 25 years in the district. She herself was a very good baker and cook. She had no problem sharing recipes. We used to, at the building, have before the holidays breakfast for the staff, and she was always in charge of that. She brought in a good deal of food, very well respected by both students and staff. The next moment of silence tonight is for Robert Collins, R.C. as he was called. Robert was a head custodian in the district for many years. He was a graduate of Middletown High School. He was a Vietnam vet, served his country. He also served the community in the VFW and as a member of the ELCs on various committees which helped the young people in the district. Robert liked sports. He enjoyed cooking, and around the holidays, he always made a huge tray of cookies for the staff. Again, Robert is one of those people who was respected by the staff. He would help you with anything, even going beyond the scope of his duties. So please remember in your thoughts and prayers Stella McLeod and Robert Collins, R.C., they will be most definitely missed.
Pastor, may I add one?
Yes, please.
Today, on the 80th anniversary of D-Day, may we all honor the 73,000 Americans that carried out one of the greatest missions of all times. Over 2,500 Americans made the ultimate sacrifice, giving their life so this whole world might know freedom. So I ask you to remember our servicemen at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. B.C. Mission of the Enlarge City School District of Middletown, Mr. Edwin Estrada, please.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We'll enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Mrs. Monchere.
Mrs. Blumenau.
Here.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Rhett.
Here.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion now for the approval of our agenda.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Bison, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Now I entertain a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes from our May 22nd, 2024 meeting.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Rhett, seconded by Mr. Estrada. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Now I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the special meetings minute from our May 28th, 2024 meeting.
Second on that.
Moved by Mr. Estrada, it was seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to our action items. I'd like to entertain a motion now for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 21A, numbers 1 and 2, administrative.
Don't move.
Second on that.
Moved by, moved by Mr. Bison, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion here?
Nope.
Just congratulations to our-
Yes. Congratulations, and we'll definitely get back to that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Now I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 21B, numbers 1 through 17, instructional.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mrs. Blumenau. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Now I need a motion for approval of Personnel Memorandum 21C, numbers 1 through 9, non-instructional.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mrs. Blumenau. Any discussion here?
John, President Williams.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I usually bring this up, there are a number of new people here in the audience tonight, and thank you for being here, everyone. We have all this agenda at least a week in advance, so we're not just rubber-stamping anything. We have the ability to ask questions, we have backup reading on the agenda, and so on, so.
Yes, sir.
This is what I wanted to say, so. There's a lot of work goes into this agenda by members of the board. Thank you.
Lot of pre-preparation. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Action item D, I need a motion for the approval of Non-Affiliated Personnel Memorandum 21D.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rhett, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you, everybody. Action item E, Approval of Financial Memorandums, 19E, numbers 1 through 96. Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Blumenau, seconded by Mr. Rhett. Any discussion here?
Pastor Williams.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on items 3, 36, and 47, I'll be abstaining. Item 3 relates to BOSI's. Items 36 and 47 relate to INSPIRE, and I sit on the boards of both those organizations.
All right. Mrs. Monchere is taking note of those abstentions. Any other discussion?
Yes, I had some concerns, but I haven't pulled it up. So therefore, it had to do with the tax surcharges and our reserve fund, and I was going to ask Mr. Tuttle just to address that. We will be addressing it again Tuesday night at our audit committee, but so folks know, I believe, and I could be wrong, the tax surcharges go back for eight-
Eight years?
Six years.
Six years, so that we have to have enough reserve there, and I'll leave it up to you to explain about the reserves.
Okay, so currently, the district has nine active reserves that we kind of use as our savings accounts if the general fund cannot cover expenses. Sometimes we use the reserves for capital projects, like you said, tax surcharges, and some other liabilities that the district can incur. So usually, and sometimes in budget seasons, we'll use the reserve to offset the budget. This year, we did not, so we were very fortunate, but in the future, coming up, we're going to be using some reserves to offset the budget, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? All right. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you, everybody. Action item F, Approval of Special Services Memorandum, 18F, numbers 1 and 2.
Don't move.
Second.
That was moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Estrada. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. It so passes. Action item G, there are no change orders on this evening, so we will move on to action item H, Approval of Bit Awards for the FS1 Food Service Equipment. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Rhett. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm a preacher, I like amen's. Opposed? Seeing none, it so passes. Thank you. Moving on, action item I, Approval of Board of Education Calendar, School Year 2024-2025. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, I need a second. Oh, okay. Seconded by Mrs. Blumenau. Any discussion here?
Just a quick one.
Yes.
The very last meeting is scheduled for Wednesday. Is that, is there something on the, oh, it's Juneteenth next year.
Yeah.
Answer my own question, thanks.
All right. Any other discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Moving on, action item J, we got a lot of action items tonight, we're going to get them out the way so we can celebrate. Action item J, like a motion for the approval of resolution authorizing settlement between the Enlarge City School District of Middletown and the VMJR Companies LLC.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Blumenau, seconded by Mr. Rhett. Do I have to read this resolution?
Yes.
All right. Let's read this resolution. One moment, I'm sorry, pulling it up.
Here you go.
I have it. Resolution authorizing settlement between the Enlarge City School District of Middletown and VMJR Companies LLC, whereas the Enlarge City School District of Middletown, the district, contracted with VMJR Companies LLC, VMJR, in connection with the Twin Towers Middle School Masonary Restoration Project, the project, and whereas a dispute arose between the district and VMJR in connection with the project concerning claims for additional work and late completion, the dispute, and whereas VMJR served a verified notice of claim on the district in connection with the dispute on or about July 26, 2023, and whereas, in consultation with the district administration, council for the district has reached terms of a global settlement to resolve the dispute in the interest of avoiding additional costs and uncertainties with respect to the same, and whereas the district administration has advised the Board of Education of the material terms of the settlement, the settlement terms, of the dispute, and it is the recommendation of the district administration and the district's legal counsel to settle the dispute pursuant to those settlement terms, and whereas the Board of Education finds it in the best public interest to approve the settlement and to authorize the superintendent of schools or superintendent's designees to undertake whatever actions are necessary to execute and implement a final settlement agreement in accordance with the settlement terms, the settlement agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the district as follows. One, the Board of Education hereby authorizes and approves the resolution of the dispute in accordance with the settlement terms of which it has been advised by the district administration and pursuant to the settlement agreement that has been provided to the Board of Education, and, two, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools or superintendent's designees to execute the settlement agreement in accordance with the settlement terms and undertake whatever further actions are necessary in order to implement such settlement agreements. The question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote, well, we're doing that now. We're going to take this, we're going to do this resolution by roll call, right? We're going to, we're going to do this by roll call. So we've had the motion, we've had the second, we've read the resolution. Is there any other discussion surrounding the resolution? We're all clear? All right. Mrs. Monchere, will you please do the roll call vote?
Mrs. Blumenau.
Aye.
Mr. Estrada.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Rhett.
Aye.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Yes.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Aye.
And Pastor Williams.
Aye. Thank you. It so passes. We're going to move on. You let me catch my breath?
The wise and reliable force.
Yeah, that was, I did that all in one breath. Moving on to action item K, Approval of City of Middletown's SRO Contract, School Year 2024-2025. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Bison, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion here?
Yes, just a note of appreciation for them getting the contract out to us in a timely fashion, so before the new school year starts. Appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Now I'd like to intonation, motion, action item L, Approval to Authorize the Grade Change Configuration for Maple Hill Elementary School. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second on that.
Moved by Mr. Bison, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion?
Can I get a little clarification on just what that is about?
Superintendent will give us where it came.
I don't want to read the rest of the question.
Is this also is a resolution? Yes. Let me just, I'm sorry.
You want Freddie to do it?
Grade Change Resolution, okay, this one's not as long, so I can do this, I can do this one. Board of Education of the Enlarge City School District of Middletown, New York Resolution, authorizing the grade change configuration for Maple Hill Elementary School Resolution. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the requested grade change configuration for Maple Hill Elementary School from a K5 to a pre-K5 public school. This resolution is based on careful consideration of the needs of our school community and adherence to New York State SED guidelines. Therefore be it further resolved, the Board of Education hereby authorizes this resolution to take effect immediately. I'm going to ask our superintendent if she would, if she would explain for those of you who need some clarification. Thank you.
Great, thank you. This is an opportunity for us to utilize the program at Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon as an amplification point for our pre-K scholars, so we can open up two pre-K classrooms for the fall of 2024.
Everybody, yes?
Will they be focused primarily? Just a point of clarification, will those be primarily special ed students, or will it be integrated?
Yes, it'll be both, but an opportunity for us to take the incredible resources that we have at the program at Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon and offer our pre-K young people a place inside district where they belong.
Great, thank you.
Do you know how many slots that would probably mean as far as additional students?
Not very specifically around about, only because it will depend on the services and needs that, the young people that are in that program, but it's probably not more than about 20 slots.
And this is only for Truman Moon and Maple Hill?
So Maple Hill is the building, the program is at Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon, so the two classrooms will actually reside in the program at Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon, but the school building is Maple Hill.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions, discussions? We're going to do this by roll call, by roll call vote again. Mrs. Monchere, please.
Mrs. Blumenau.
Aye.
Mr. Estrada.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Rhett.
Aye.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Here. Yes.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Aye.
Pastor Williams.
Here. Aye. See, you started something. Aye.
Sorry.
I stopped listening to you, Rose. It so passes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, real quick, to action item M, we're almost done. Action item M, Approval of the Superintendent's Contract. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move. Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Rhett, but moved and seconded by just about everybody at the table. Any discussion here?
Just well deserved.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes. We concur. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on, Approval, action item N, Approval of Assistant Superintendents for Instruction and Curriculum Contracts.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Blumenau, seconded by Mr. Rhett. Any discussion here?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. Again, well deserved. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Moving on, Approval of Assistant Superintendent for Administration's Contract.
So move. Second.
Been moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Bison. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Thank you. Last action item. Last action item, Approval of Director, action item P, Approval, I need a motion for the Approval of Director of Personnel and Inclusion Contract, please. Moved by Mrs. Blumenau, seconded by Mr. Rhett. Any discussion here?
Still well deserved.
Another, another, yes.
I believe that our, I believe that our personnel and inclusion director is moving us well into the future.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I'll have to say, same for, and we forgot to say, same thing for our superintendent for administration.
Absolutely. Yeah. That's good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you, everybody. We got through that. Now it'll be my opportunity to catch my breath for real. We're going to move on into our recognitions and community updates. We're going to now have the recognition of our tenure and retirements, and so I'm going to turn you into the hands of Mrs. Adoma and Mrs. Crawford.
You mean, none of these people here are here to hear us today?
You all didn't want to hear me talk, you didn't want to see me dance, you didn't want to see me sing or anything like that? Okay, never mind, that's all right.
We don't want to see them dance.
I'll take a song. All right, good evening, Board President Williams, Board Vice President Williams, Superintendent Creedon, and Board of Education trustees. Tonight, we are here to celebrate significant milestones in the professional journeys of our educators by honoring both our tenure recipients and retirees. First, we will begin by recognizing our 30 tenure recipients. When an educator receives tenure, it marks the end of their probationary period. Earning tenure is not just an achievement, it's a testament to their dedication, hard work, and unwavering commitment to our scholars' growth and success. As former educator, Rita Pearson once said, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best they can possibly be." I encourage each of our educators to carry this dedication with you each and every day as you move forward in your careers. I'm now going to ask our principals to come forward with their tenure recipients and give some brief remarks about the group. After the educators of each school have been recognized, you will, you can return to your seats. We will take pictures during intermission of each school. Once your name is called, please come up and stand by our human resources staff. All right, we're going to start with Maple Hill. So Mrs. Driscoll.
Good evening. Mrs. Trout, they'll be standing over there. Regina's arguing with me about where everybody should be standing. Okay, good evening, sorry, getting our act together here. So I'm very excited to welcome our tenure candidates from Maple Hill for this year. I would like to call all your names, and if you would come up and stand with our team up there. And is Evelyn Escobar here? I didn't see Evelyn. I'm not sure if she's with us tonight. Evelyn Escobar is a teaching assistant at Maple Hill. So this group, just a phenomenal group of people, incredibly dedicated, hardworking, sitting on committees, working hard with their students every day, and I think, you know, when I look at the group of them, the thing that strikes me the most is they are all incredible advocates for their students. They reach out to support staff, they have great relationships with families, and they are absolutely loved by the children in their classrooms, and they're also loved by the staff at Maple Hill. So congratulations to all of you.
Next, we will have Presidential Park with Mr. Matt Kelly.
I have to say, we always say that we're always building our team, and you want the players on your team that you always want on your roster that should be wearing a Middletown jersey. I couldn't be any prouder of the three that I get to recognize tonight. Mr. Aaron Rose. Ms. Kiara Allen. We always say that we live and breathe, you know, connections before content. This team right here really strives from that, from coaching athletic sports to meeting our kids before they come in the building, to running our sensory inner murals, to even maybe, okay, Kiara, a random dance party in the middle of the day in the room, it gets her kids motivated and going, but I couldn't be any prouder of them and so happy to have them on the Middletown team. Give it up for them.
All right, William A. Carter and Mrs. Kathy Jensen.
I am proud and honored to be here with my administrative team to present to you our tenure candidates tonight. Ms. Jessica Leo. Ms. Jessica Leo. And Ms. Alyssa Fay. Both are ELA kindergarten teachers. Their classrooms and environments are the epitome of what we want a kindergarten classroom to be. Welcoming and affirming environments that bring literacy to life through interactive read-alouds, hands-on learning, engagement, and they are experts at teaching independence and releasing a gradual release of learning. I'm incredibly proud of them, honored to work with them, and to make them part of our team.
Next, we'll have Maple Hill Annette and Mrs. Tracy Sorrentino.
Got to adjust lower. Good evening, Mrs. Creedon, President Williams, members of the board. It gives me extreme pleasure to introduce Ms. Megan Meyer and Ms. Andrea Parnas for They are strong advocates and caring young women. They are risk takers, and they are precise in what they do. They come every day, ready to support our little guys with whatever they need. I am super proud of them, and I am very, very grateful to be their principal. Congratulations, ladies.
Next, we'll have Monthagan Middle School and Mr. Redonia.
Good evening, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendents Adoma and Mr. Tuttle, members of the Board of Education and community members. It's with great pride that Monthagan Middle School recognizes tonight three teachers that are here and two that are not. First, we have Charli Carter. We have Alana Hutt. And Olivia, Olivia Santoro. Alyssa Griecko and Ken Vargas, who received tenure earlier in the year, could not be here. Just real quickly, the, the three teachers you see before you, the thing that sets them apart is their willingness to work above and beyond in our school community, even outside their contractual days. Just to give you a quick highlight, Olivia, just some of the things she does is she coaches cheerleading, she works STEM camp, robotics camp, lots of things outside the school day. Ms. Hutt teaches EDI and participates in after-school tutoring. Ms. Carter coaches soccer and also co-coaches the New York State Champion Odyssey of the Mine team. Had to throw that in. Congratulations to each of them on this well-deserved honor. We look forward to many more years of your exceptional work with the Middletown students and making a difference in the lives of our young people.
All right, next, we have Twin Towers and Mrs. Nicole Brookins.
Good evening, Board President Williams, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Creedon, and esteemed board members. Twin Towers Building Admin and I are excited to celebrate the tenure of the following twin educators. We have some social studies teachers with Erin Callahan. And also math teachers Danielle Cost. And Danielle Top. We could easily tell you how amazing these educators are, and even more importantly, how amazing they are as people. But we thought it would be best to hear some statements from those that matter the most. So this is what your scholars had to say about you. I like how she teaches because she is calm and relaxing and her voice is soothing. She makes math easy to learn because she explains it well. I used to really struggle with math, but she really helped me this year. I don't think it's so hard now. He helps us prepare and gives us a lot of assignments, but it has been very helpful. He tries to make class fun. For example, whenever we have a vocab quiz, he turns on battle music and runs around the So on behalf of Twin Towers, and most importantly, our scholars, we would like to say thank you for what you do each and every day.
And last but not least, Middletown High School with newly appointed Mr. Billy Donahue and Mrs. Kate Sheety.
Thank you. Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Creedon, members of the board, members of the Middletown School community. I'd first just like to say congratulations and call up, and as everybody else has done, I will save my remarks for after. So it brings me great pleasure to announce first, Ms. Elizabeth Lucaides. Mr. E.J. Harrison. Brian Pollock. Marcy Moskowitz. And last but not least, Ruth Wetzel. So every time we hire someone is really an opportunity, and I'm pleased to say that all in this group have met and exceeded the expectations we had set for them, imparting a tremendous positive impact on our school community in the relatively short amount of time they've been at Middletown High School. This group brings fresh ideas, new strategies, and a great amount of energy and enthusiasm that help bring out the best in our scholars. Tonight is recognition of that fact, and we look forward to seeing what you'll do in the years to come. Thank you all.
Congratulations again to each of you on earning your tenure. We are proud of you and excited to see the continued positive influence on our district. Next, we're going to bring up Mrs. Julian Crawford to recognize our retirees.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Williams, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Creedon. I have the honor and privilege of introducing, congratulating, and celebrating our Middletown retirees. To all of our retirees, thank you for your dedication, your years of service, for showing up each day with devotion for our young people and for being true legacy makers. Once I call your name, please go stand over by Personnel so that we can give you a huge round of applause. From the MSAA unit, Susan Short. From our Middletown Directors and Supervisors, Deborah Dunleavy. From our Middletown Teaching Association, Mary Conklin and Evelyn King. From our MTA, we have Valerie Minton, Jill Weltman, Christine Carafa, Ronnie Wapnick, Paul Ingladon, Catherine Bonnell, and Patricia Smith.
You know, you know, Paul's younger than me. He's not allowed to retire yet.
From our Nurses Unit, Wendy Manis. From our MECA Unit, Daisy Vega. And from our Food Service Unit, Lisa Babcock and Lisa Palé. Congratulations to our retirees. Each retiree on behalf of the Middletown District received an amazing travel bag since we know that they will be spending plenty of time traveling around the world. At this time, we're going to have a celebration for all of our retirees and our tenure, tenure recipients. We're going to go down the hallway. I want every retiree and tenure recipient to take pictures, and we have refreshments for everyone. So please join us.
We're just going to take 15 minutes. This is intermission, 15 minutes for the celebration, and we'll come in back and start and restarting our meeting. Thank you and congratulations, everybody.
I'm telling you, Court. I'm telling you.
(laughter) (inaudible) 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 (laughter)
...who ranks 14th. Cameron is a football player and wrestler here at Middletown. National Honor Society, St. John of Truth Award in mathematics with a high honor roll, Key Club Academic Award in broadcasting, Academic All-American in wrestling, and a three-time highest GPA award winner for the wrestling team. His athletic honors include Section 9 Senior All-Star Team, Section 9 Champions, and obviously football and wrestling as well, co-offensive player of the year in football. He's got two varsity letters and also part of the Great American Rivalry Series Scholarship Scholar Athlete Program. And his community service does a lot of tutoring, Downtown Middletown City Cares as well as the Christmas Parade, and volunteering with the American Cancer Society at the George Washington Bridge Challenge and the Run for Downtown and Middletown, as well as Reefs Across America and the MHS Adopt a Family. His future plan, right after my own heart.
Yeah, I think you would like that.
He's going to Syracuse University at the Newhouse School of Communications for broadcasting and digital journalism, which is my degree. So congratulations to Cameron and Caitlin. They represented us well at the dinner. And I also do want to mention the Juneteenth Festival Celebration, the fourth annual one from 3:00 to 5:00. They have a variety of new children's books are available from Sadie's, DJ RP Beats. First 50 community members get a free swag bag from Sadie's. So good job for the city and all of those taking part in the Juneteenth Celebration. And we hope to see everybody enjoying the advantages of being a Middletown resident. So that's what I have. I'm sorry, yeah, 3:00 to 5:00. And I think there's other items that'll go on afterwards throughout the day there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. Mr. Bison.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Last evening, I had the opportunity to attend...
Your time's up, Mr. Bison.
Okay.
See, now you know how it feels at the end of the meeting. No, I'm kidding.
I'll get that in there again. Anyhow, last evening, I had the opportunity to attend the Women's University End of the Year Lunch or Dinner, excuse me. And four of our Middletown High School students were present along with Mr. Connell, and they were awarded scholarships. Miriam Bah, I believe, is going to University of Southern California. Brianna Rodriguez, I think Wesley. Now, I could be wrong on these. The acoustics from where I was sitting, but I'll take my jives there.
You're getting a thumbs up over there.
Oh, okay. Deanna Connell is going to Cornell. I didn't speak with Mia Ramkassun. Oh, I got that one, Pastor?
Got it.
Oh, that was a struggle.
University of South Carolina.
Oh, she's, okay.
She's going to the other USC on the East Coast, University of South Carolina.
It was a very, very nice affair, and the students were, as always, the creme de la creme of our Middletown High School. So to all of them, good luck.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Bison. Mrs. Blumenau.
I'm loving this moment.
All right, well, we'll move on. Mr. Ret.
Yes. Good evening. We have a couple of events going on. Let's start with this first one. YMC A sponsored Make Every Step Count. Oh, hey, slow down. Let me play down there. Can we double back to the floor?
Well, first of all, to those that are watching on Midi TV and YouTube, et cetera, et cetera, we had a bit of a brown out or something along those lines. And so, but we're back, and we're going to continue on with our meeting. Thank you for your patience in waiting for us, and even for those that are here still in the audience to my right. So, yeah, I have to look over here because there's nobody directly in front of me. No, that's all right. Stay where you are. You're good. You're good. I'm going to go back to Mr. Ret. See, look at, see, now, everybody's moving now. I'm going to go back to Mr. Ret, and because we cut off in the middle of your comments. So, Mr. Ret, if you could please repeat what you said.
Okay, okay, I think I'll try this again. I just want to share a couple of community events that are going on. The first one here is sponsored by the Y Make Every Step Count Disco Night at the Zone. And it's a great opportunity for students to come out. It's from 6:00 to 10:00 on June 29th. And the proceeds and the benefits of this will go to the annual Strong Kids Campaign, allowing the Y to provide financial assistance to make YMCA programs and services available to all. The music is by a gentleman by the name of DJ Kevin. He's a graduate of Middletown City Schools. The next one, well, it's not quite mine, but I'll talk about it. Yes, another Juneteenth Celebration is entitled Freedom Day. It's, of course, on June 19th, the Wednesday, and it's at the Galleria Mall in Crystal Run. It's in the center court between the hours of 1:00 to 2:30. It's a really great event. We'll have some music, dance, and poetry. I'll be doing a song as well, and we hope people come out and enjoy it. It's a special event, and parents should really get their children out of the house and get them to this wonderful event. And finally, there's one more that might be floating around there, and that's not the one. So I'm going to go to my phone. It's a kids' celebration at Thrall Park. It's Saturday, June 8th, between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. It's actually sponsored by the City of Middletown Police Department. It's a fun day for whole families, and a lot of different events going on. Touch a Truck will be out there, and they have different sponsors throughout the city that will be there as well. So again, that's June 8th between 11:00 and 2:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. Please come out to these events. If you need more information on it, we'll look to post it up on the Middletown City School website. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ret. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Williams. I'd like to give a shout out to Fran Glickman, and Fran Glickman coordinated and was in charge of the junior/senior prom. I know she spent countless hours working, because when we left the meeting, sometimes we found her still working. So she really did a good job on that. All the high school administrators were there. I didn't stay too long because I didn't want to interfere. I know Mrs. Creedon was there and helped direct traffic, so she was there. Sorry that we couldn't have gotten some support from other agencies that could have helped us out, but we weren't able to do that, unfortunately. And there's some of the prom. In all this, takes meticulous planning. And I know Fran and her staff are always up to this, and they go over every single detail. So that was a very, very nice event. I heard from community members who enjoyed it and so on. So congratulations for a successful evening for our junior and senior class. You know, that evening had the support of many of the high school staff, in addition to all the administrative staff. Many of the instructional staff were there. The security was good at the prom. And it was just a lovely evening. I think my, I don't know, my time may be up, so.
John, John, you have to take advantage. For the first time, there's no clock there for you, John, so run away with it.
I want to, you know, another shout out, Dr. Johnson, who is, I believe him back there, for supporting, for running a very professional, very professional forum, a candidate's forum. He did a very nice job on that. And just on a personal note, people have been asking me why I did not have signs. And the reason is because the money I would have spent on signs, I donated to the Middletown Humane Society. That's a no-kill shelter, and they do a wonderful job there. They don't get, people don't realize, they don't get support from either the state or the local jurisdictions. They have to exist on some, the fees they charge and so on, and they're building an addition up there. So it's a good organization to belong to. So if you're not a member, maybe you want to consider joining. So I'm going to end it now, John, because I know you want to speed the meeting along. You're going to Syracuse early in the morning. Your son is competing, and I'm sure he'll bring back a championship. Good, okay, I'll go on next time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perino. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Thank you. I have a couple of images. It takes a village, yes, right on time. So we have the fourth annual Takes a Village Back to School BBQ that the date is set for September 7th. So we're trying to get this out well in advance. Heavy lifting done by, sponsored by, Middletown Police Department, and Large City School District of Middletown, Middletown Youth Sports, Mid-City Transit, the City of Middletown, Middletown Parks and Rec. And I'm sure there's so many other people that I'm going to be adding to this list. But that's what we have. This is the fourth annual. The last couple of years, we've had thousands of people there. It's been an excellent event, great energy, great community event, bring out the family. We're sharing this a lot online, and the district is sharing it. I think Superintendent Creedon sent it out to all the staff, and so it's going to be amazing. Every year, it gets bigger and bigger, so we're excited about that. Let me keep going, so I stay within my four minutes. And also, the other image is the basketball league we have coming up. Yes, this is the second annual Middletown Youth Sports Summer Basketball League, grades three through eight. We're going to have two days where we set aside for the games, and we'll have other days for, you know, free training. It's all about giving back to the kids. We, our organization is growing really fast, and we have a bunch of great families and kids involved. So we're just trying to, you know, get the kids out, keep them busy, you know, a couple of days out of the summer. It's located at Monhegan Middle School Outdoor Courts. And if you haven't seen them, they're amazing courts. The district did a great job with those. So, yeah, divisions third through eighth. So the registration is on online. I'm going to share that with the district also. Limited space, but if the kids don't get to register, like I said, we'll be having free trainings and things of that sort for the kids. And I'll keep it moving. I want to mention...
Freddie, are they there all day during the days that they're there?
No.
Or how long is the run to?
I don't, I don't believe we put the times up yet. It'll be, you can do your day camps, right, and it'll be after that. I think last year, we ran games five, six, and seven o'clock, maybe.
Yeah.
You're still able to get your, you know, day camp is important for kids, you know. So we don't want to conflict with that. So it's always towards the evening.
Yeah, and the evening's like about 6:00 o'clock.
Yeah, like 5:00, 6:00, 7:00, something like that, yeah. Yep, thank you. That's, that was a good question. Thank you, Ed. Got to get you out there, commentating maybe the championship game or something like that. Yeah, definitely. I don't know how much we can pay you, but, you know, we'll try and get you out there. So the third thing was...
I'm the cheapest PA you'll find.
I appreciate it. The, I'm going to touch on it now briefly, and then in our board convo at the end, I'll speak on it more, but the MBK Symposium that I want to salute, give a salute to Executive Principal William Donahue, did a great job. Curtis Ret, John Williams, and myself were four strong with 26 or 27?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six high school teenagers. And it was interesting. It was fun. It was fun. I learned a lot from it myself. The kids, they got so engaged, and it was just an awesome atmosphere, and I just can't wait for the next one. So salute to you three gentlemen. It was a pleasure, you know, going up there and bonding and connecting with our young ones, so.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So I will, I will just piggyback on that, because at our next board meeting, we're going to be bringing the MBK to allow a few of the boys to be able to unpack and share about their experience at the symposium. I will, I will add this. I'm grateful to Mr. Donahue, you know, and his team. Karen, Karen was, Karen handled everything. I mean, there was nothing that was left uncovered. We had, we had folders with agendas and everything in it with the names of all the boys. But I will, I will add this. I will add this. I did not sleep much on Wednesday night because my, my room was right next to Mr. Donahue's room. And so every time my door opened, he jumped up, and every time his door opened, I jumped up. So, but we kept watching everything. The, the boys represented Middletown very well, and I'm very proud of them. And somebody from another school district asked me, "Pastor, how did you manage 26 boys to bring 26?" I told them, I said, "Well, I can't tell you my secrets, because if I tell you my secrets, I have to kill you." But, but we did it. So again, I, I'm grateful for you, you gentlemen. And the highlight of it for, for me, the best part of it was when we got home and all the young men were shaking our hands and thanking us for taking them on this trip. And I'm hoping that it made a lifelong impact, lasting impact in their life. At some point down the line, if they forget it right now, that they'll remember that somebody cared enough to try to give them an experience that would help them to be able to see that they have unlimited possibilities in their life and that there are no, there is no ceiling to what they can do. Lastly, and we're going to get out, we're going to get out of here and do what we got to do so we can move on, but I do want to give a shout out, Mr. Perino already said I want to give a shout out to our Middletown Outdoor Track and Field Team. We have 11, I think it's 11, how many, is it Dave? Is Dave still here? No. We have, we have, I think about 11. I think it's 11 of our athletes are in Syracuse right now, preparing for the New York State Track Championships. And we have, we have, we have a scholar athlete in throwing, the discus. We have the four-by, the four-by-one team. We have, what else do we have? We have the high jump, and we have, we have so many others. And so I'm proud to say, I'll give him a shout out, because he's my boy. I'll give him a shout out. You can tell him I, I'm a little partial to it, but my baby boy, don't tell him I said that, but my baby boy is, is completing in three events. He's, he's running in the championship for the 100-meter, the 200-meter, and the four-by, four-by-one relay. So I'm going to go up tomorrow morning to support them, and we're going to wish the track team, the entire track team, success on tomorrow and on Saturday.
And next year, they won't have to go too far.
Right.
Because next year, we host the state track and field championship.
Next year, we host the state championship. And Aaron did say this, too. He said he's, he's already got five records this year. So he said he's going, he's going for the 100-meter record while he's up here. So I'm excited, I'm excited about that, to see him run, and I'm grateful. I can announce this tonight, my time is done, but I can announce this tonight, that he is, he is going to Dominican University on a full ride. All right, we're, we're done. Let's move on to the better stuff. Public participation, opportunity to address the board. The board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. I did not use any periods in between any of those sentences. Mr. Estrada, will you please read that in Spanish?
Sure. La junta designará una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentario público por un periodo de hasta 40 minutos. A cada persona se le permitirá hasta cuatro minutos. No se permite al público discutir temas y/o asuntos que ocurren a personas específicas. La persona debe registrarse, firmar antes de hablar, y las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otra persona.
Thank you, sir. So the mic is open for anybody from the public who wishes to speak. You can sign in at the, at the podium and take your four minutes. Going once, going twice, we're gone. Thank you. Thank you. So we move on from that. We're going, go now to our superintendent updates. This is exciting. I'm going to turn you now into the hands of our superintendent, Mrs. Amy Creedon.
Thank you, Pastor. It's with great pleasure and so much Midi pride that I congratulate and formally introduce our new administrators to our loved community. You'll hear a bit more about them in a minute, but just know that these individuals, each of them embody a spirit of dedication, joy for service, love of our Middletown community and are scholar-focused. And for a few of them, are lifelong committed members to this district. Mr. Donahue, Ms. Sheedy, and Ms. Burr, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, are three of the administrators that are approved this evening. All three are former students of our district and have served in various roles from teacher to administrator for years. When you add Ms. Lester to this group, all four of those administrators have served in the district and have come up through the ranks. This is a tribute to the culture and climate we're digging in on in Middletown, creating pathways for our leaders to learn and grow. Tonight, we also very excitedly welcome Ms. Lucarini. Thank you for choosing us. As they step into their new roles, I have no doubt that they will lead with joy, their full heart, integrity, and compassion, and always with a relentless pursuit of excellence. With their guidance, our district will continue to thrive and ensuring that every young person receives the education that they deserve. So first, I'd like to invite Ms. Lester, our new Presidential Park Elementary School principal, to come up and introduce herself to the school community formally.
Good evening, President Pastor Williams, Vice President Freddie Williams, Superintendent Creedon, Board of Education, and Middletown Community members. I would like to thank you all for having the confidence in me to be the principal of Presidential Park beginning in the 2024, excuse me, 24, 25 school year. Throughout my time in Middletown as an instructional leader at Monhegan Middle School, I have learned that our incredible and supportive school community not only creates legacy makers in our scholars, but also in the educators that lead them and nurture them. I am proud to be a legacy maker leader for Presidential Park, and I'm looking forward to leading our educators to ensure our scholars are confident, serious, healthy, and productive lifelong learners. Thank you again for your support.
Now, I'm going to welcome Mrs. Tagny to introduce formally her team.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Williams, Board of Education, Superintendent Creedon, and team. I am excited and grateful to stand here tonight to welcome Ms. Nicole Lucarini to our school community and our team in Special Services. Ms. Lucarini is joining us with a wide variety of experience in special education. She not only was an educator, but she was also a CSC Chair as well as coach in New York City Department of Education within the District 75 school system. So I'm going to let her introduce herself a little bit further, but welcome Ms. Nicole Lucarini.
Thank you, Nicole, and thank you, everyone, for this opportunity. I didn't prepare anything formal, but I'm excited to start my time here and looking forward to getting to work in a couple of weeks and being on this amazing team. So thank you again.
Now, I'm going to invite Effective Tomorrow, our new, no longer interim Executive Principal, Mr. William Donahue, to the microphone.
So just, just in case you don't recognize me with the glasses, for those at home, this is relatively new. So anyway, good evening, President Williams.
You became, you became principal officially, and now the glasses come in.
Right here, right here. It's because if I try to look up, it's, we're figuring it out. All right, anyway, good evening, President Williams, Superintendent Creedon, Board of Education trustees, and the Middletown community. It is with great honor and enthusiasm that expressed my gratitude in allowing me the opportunity to serve as the Executive Principal of Middletown High School. Tonight is the fulfillment of a lifelong journey from a New York City transplant enrolled in Truman Moon through Twin Towers Middle School, formerly known as the Junior High, and graduating from Middletown High School. My extended family, including my six brothers and sisters, Sabrina, Megan, Kevin, Caitlin, Eddie, Johnny, have been members of this community in some way, shape, or form for close to 40 years. For those that do not know, my goal in life was actually to be a New York City fireman, but an eye injury prevented that. And for a period of time, in my early twenties, I was, I was uncertain what my future would bring. Right around the same time following college, I returned to Middletown High School as a substitute teacher, unsure of what I truly wanted to, where I wanted to go and what I wanted to do, but it was the scholars of Middletown High School who galvanized my decision. They are the ones who gave me direction and the purpose, and I made it my professional goal to serve the Middletown High School community in any way I could, which I did as student, teacher, athlete, coach, instructional leader, associate principal alongside dear friend, and one of many mentors I've had along the way, Dr. Lynette Williams, and now Executive Principal. This lived experience has given me a front row seat to much of the growth and development of this school district and specifically Middletown High School into the powerhouse it is today. I am committed to upholding the commitment to excellence, inclusivity, and opportunities for our young people, while also charting the course for future generations of Middletown High School scholars as we prepare them to make their own legacies in an ever-changing and technologically-driven world. I firmly believe in the power of educational experience we provide at Middletown High School to transform lives, and I am committed to ensuring that every scholar at Middletown High School receives the support and guidance they need to succeed. Our goal as a leadership team is to work tirelessly to foster collaborative and supportive environment for both students and staff, prioritizing open communication and transparency, ensuring all stakeholders have a voice in the decision-making process, and all scholars feel welcomed, valued, and supported. I am grateful for the education I received in this district, and I am passionate about giving back to the community that has shaped me into the educator and leader I am today. Thank you to all those who have supported me and encouraged me along the way, my MHS family in this room, my at-home family, my wife Rachel, sons Brendan, Jack, and Sam, my mom, they're all watching, so I have to give them the shout out. And thank you, Middletown. To all the kids at home watching, the young people who attend Middletown High School, like I tell you in the hallway, work hard, and one day, you too can be principal of Middletown High School. And get used to hearing this a lot. Midi pride. Thank you all.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, do you want to introduce your teammate?
So as often said, there is no eye in team, and again, get used to, besides the Midi Pride thing, myself and Ms. Sheedy, and I cannot ask for a better associate, I cannot ask for a better team, but we're talking about... but we're talking about Ms. Sheedy tonight. She is an excellent, excellent partner in this endeavor. And I'll let her speak a little bit more about her own self tonight. So, Ms. Sheedy.
Good evening, Superintendent Creedon, President Williams, members of the board, and the community. Thank you. I am truly honored to continue my journey of service at Middletown High School as Associate Principal. Tonight is particularly special to me. It feels like a full circle moment as Middletown is not only where I received my own education from kindergarten through 12th grade, but also where I've had the privilege of teaching and serving as an administrator. I am a proud product of this district. I walked the same hallways, learned from some of the same teachers, and forged relationships that have lasted a lifetime. And that perspective has deepened my commitment to the success and well-being of our scholars. A few weeks ago, we were right here at the board meeting celebrating our scholars, K through 12, as they showcased some of the amazing things happening in our schools. And one of our scholars at the high school was presenting his Seal of Civic Readiness project, sharing how he wanted to help highlight the history of Middletown. And while all eyes were on him, I took a moment to step back and watch his family. And they were beaming with pride and joy. And the energy in the room was electric and I just took it all in. And I thought to myself, this is legacy making in action. And it doesn't just happen at board meetings. It happens every day in our schools and it happens every day at Middletown High School in ways both big and small. And I am so very proud to be a part of that. I am excited to work alongside our community members, stakeholders, parents, and guardians to make a positive impact and ensure that our high school continues to be a place where legacy makers are made. Together, we have a shared sense of purpose. I'm confident that with that shared sense of purpose, we have the ability to achieve great things, ensuring we create a safe and inclusive environment that values our diverse perspectives and backgrounds, all while preparing our scholars with 21st century skills. I know that I speak for Mr. Donahue and myself when I say that we believe in this district, we believe in this community, and we believe in our young people. Thank you for believing in us.
Wow, that was worth the wait. It was worth the wait. And we are grateful. We're grateful. I am. I, I, listen. I'm one of those, I'm one of, of Mr. Buck-Eyed students. So there is a legacy. There's a legacy here. And I say this all the time. I'm a third-generation Middletowner. My mother graduated in 1949 from Middletown High School. My sisters, my older sisters, both of them have passed away, but both my sisters graduated in 1970 and 1971. I graduated in 1982. And my younger brother, who also pastors here in Middletown, graduated in 1985. So we're all in, midi pride all the way. Congratulations to everybody. And thank you, everybody, for coming and staying here tonight with us. We appreciate you. Moving on real quick, and we're going to be out of here and, and we're going to be adjourning. Board of Education Community Reports, are there any, I mean, Committee Reports? Are there any Committee Reports tonight?
Audit Committee is meeting Tuesday night at 5:00.
Awesome. Board Member Roundtables, anything, anything doing compelling that anybody wants? Or do, can we, all right, Mr. Williams?
I just wanted to add, before the trip, before we jumped on the coach bus, Mrs. Karen Rogers and Kate Sheedy, you guys really helped set the tone. I'm sitting back and I'm watching the boys and they're all excited. And Karen's like, you know, pointing and, and, you know, getting the boys in order. And Mrs. Sheedy, you, you guys were bringing in lunches and the water. So it always takes, you know, a woman to kind of help organize. It was a guy's, you know, trip, but I want to thank you guys, give a special thanks to you guys. So that's what I have. Thank you.
That's good. That, yeah, it was, it was good. And so I didn't have any jokes earlier, but I'll close with, I'll close with this. My father, my father said this a long time ago. He said, "Man, man is like a worm." He crawls around in the dirt, under the mud, all his life, until a chick comes along and picks him up. And so what would we be without each other? And so we celebrate, we celebrate each other. We celebrate the women in our lives and we celebrate all of the men in our lives. And all of you that are in this room today and for our community and our public, we celebrate you. This is a great time of celebration. We're coming down close to the end of a school year. And we have, we have challenges. We've had challenges and we have things that we are going to have to face. There will always be work to do. But I've come to find out that, that we also have to celebrate every, every victory, every little victory. We have to celebrate it because those victories give us hope for more victories as we go forward. And there is no retreat. And I believe this for everyone that's in this room right now, regardless of anybody else in the public, there is no retreat, there is no surrender, there is no give up, there is no throw in the white towel. We're pressing forward because we care about our young people and we care about one another. So again, that's midi pride. That being said, we're, we're. Yes, yes, I'll let you make a motion to adjourn. Oh, that was it? That was the motion? Okay, can I get a second? Seconded by Mrs. Bluman now. There's no discussion. All in favor? Opposed. We are adjourned. Our next board meeting will be Tuesday, June 18th at 6:30. We'll see you there. Have a good night, everybody.